Early Levi. All right, we'll call meeting in order and can we all take the question?
And to the Republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice. The Salamaka City Central School District acknowledges the homeland of the Ananda Waka, the people of the Great Hill, the Seneca people on whose ancestral and modern day land Salamaka School District now stands in whose water we enjoy. We stand with all Indigenous peoples in their resolve to remain connected to their lands. While we cannot undo what has been done, it is the goal of the Salamaka City Central School District to recognize the history and make improvements that will benefit the next seven generations of Indigenous students. Thank you.
Dr. Mueller, Kim John, Vice President of the School Board, filling in for President Teresa Ray, who was excused today. And we have two board members on the call, Brad Early and Christian Reiler. Um, so we'll go into um. Approving the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there are two items that have been modified since the agenda was published on Friday. Item eight A, we adjusted the start date in the supporting paperwork for Ms. Katie Snyder. And we corrected the Cody Schimp daily rate, which had a type of regret or error in it.
Yeah. All right, so I'll take a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Dale, second by Ted. Any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposed? We got a thumbs up from Brad. No opposed. Motion carries. Okay, so item number three, recognitions and presentations. We have presentation for NISBA local foods and composting programs. And we have a congratulatory letter.
I believe we have, here, some announcer.
And I should be first on the agenda.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, uh, my name is Sylvester Clary. I'm a board member of NISBA. And also I'm a NISBA ambassador. In addition to that, I'm the president of the New York State Caucus of Black School Board Members. I'm also the president of the Chautauqua County School Board Association. And I sit on the board of Erie Two Voces. Couple of years ago, NISBA wanted to create a program to recognize positive programming, bringing change to students, communities, and districts. And so they created this program called the Champion of Change Program. And the recognition was unsolicited. Member relations. That what they do is they comb through these e-clips or articles that highlights particular programs. And in addition, member relations, they visited upwards of 300 districts, each to discuss their challenges and their successes. And all programs are brought to a committee. And this committee chooses the programs that are recognized through a beautiful recognition banner, which I have here. And I just want to share with you that my home district is originally Forestville. This program that you're, your food program that you have, we have gone through this and it was a tremendous program. Students got a lot out of it. And matter of fact, in addition to that, we got a new freezer out of it. I mean, so it's a tremendous program. So NISBA just wanted to recognize you folks and congratulate you folks for doing a real fine job. What I'd like to do, I'd like to present this banner. Champion of change. Such a fine job that you folks have done. You know, today, no matter what the challenges are, and we have a lot, it seems like we have more and more challenges every year. But you know what? Our students are worth it. Everyone. And I just want to take a moment just to thank every one of you folks. Every one of you. Entire board, your staff, and everyone else for the work that you do for our kids. And I say our kids because all kids are our kids. And that's the way we should look at it. So I would like for, can I have a large round of applause for what you have. And I would like to get a picture, if I could, of the entire board and perhaps a few students.
Sure.
Students, would you like to come down and take a picture with us? Oh, yes. All right, thank you. Thank you, baby. Thank you. In addition, I have a little surprise for you.
Love surprises.
Love surprises. This, this, this is about 40 years ago, I came to Salamaka. Friend of mine and myself. And we went fishing. We had a good time. We never forgot Salamaka. And so what we did is I'm a songwriter. We wrote a song about Salamaka. And I'm going to play part of that song for you right now. And it's funny because I wished I was in Salamaka. If I can pull it up here. This song is out on Spotify. It's out on YouTube.
I was going to joke and ask if it was on Spotify.
Just because, and I'm here, I wished I was in Salamaka. The rest of it, if you want to hear it, it's out on Spotify. It's on an album that's called Love is the Way. And it's under the name of Key and Cleary, K E Y and Cleary, C L E A R Y, if you want to pick it up.
Awesome. Nice little tribute. All right, so that was our NISBA recognition. And next we have the recognition for our security officers.
See, if I could get School Resource Officer Brady and our Safety Officer Martin to come on down. So on September 30th, which was a Saturday at our homecoming dance, we experienced a circumstance that placed the safety of our students in jeopardy. Tonight, we're here to recognize the efforts of two individuals who contributed to the safety and well-being of our students and staff that night. School and student and staff safety is the most important undertaking that we can take as a school district. So tonight, we recognize School Safety Officer Martin and School Safety, our School Resource Officer Ray for the actions that they took on that Saturday night to ensure that our students can learn, compete, and grow and in a safe, nurturing, and challenging environment. And it's due to their dedication that we can be here tonight. And I wanted to express our gratitude with a little letter of commendation, which states, there you are. In appreciation for your assistance ensuring the safety and security of the students of Salamaka Central School District, we commend you with this certificate of commendation. Congratulations. Our clown's giggling together here. Hold him up there and there we go.
On behalf of the board, we want to thank you for everything that you guys do for our district and for our kids. Dr. Miller is absolutely right. We can't do what we do here without you guys. And we do appreciate it. It may not go, it may not be said enough. But we just want to make sure that you understand. We do appreciate everything you guys do for us. Thank you again. All right. So now we're on to item number four, communications. Do we have any public communications? Nobody? What about Title Six? I see Aaron is here.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things and big thank you to Becky Gray. I know she's new to the district too, kind of, you know, and tried to grab prospect more recently, so been able to handle everything with that. I actually worked with her previously at Salamaka P B at the local food service. It's awesome. And you're in Hack, and already making her work at points. But no, I just wanted to let everyone know, we've been working on submitting the annual performance report for last year, kind of wrapping all that up. We just submitted survey one last week and I actually just finished survey two. Just now, it's a little bit late here. So all we need to do to actually finish up and wrap up all 2022, 2023 school year is one signature and sign off from Dr. Miller. So maybe when I'm wrapped up here, just kind of type his name in real quick, send that off and it'll be done as of, as of now. That'll be kind of a big off the plate. We've been working with Native Services, NAC for the last month and a half or so on data collection and everything possible that we can do. So everything's in good for that year and we're going to kind of be able to take a breath and kind of focus more with IPC and everything else on this coming year. Some of the things we're already doing and even starting with the actual 2025. So kind of nice for us, as well as next week is the NAIA trip. We're talking about that for a long time. Both of that, so come Monday, we're going to get everything ready and all the students and parent participation that needs to be done, done. And we're going to have a nice smooth trip and then on the board meeting, after we come back, hopefully have the students come with me and kind of just maybe take a few minutes to tell you guys how their experiences, some of the things they've learned. And maybe even some of the staff that goes with us, maybe a liaison or something, I can get them near and maybe kind of chat about our experience. Huge for the school, huge for native sources and education. So we're ready for that trip. Indigenous parent committees tomorrow night, well, if you want to come out and help out with studying down Title Six ones throughout the year. SYD is the Roland Youth Coalition. We're looking for student participation as much as possible. Listen for the announcements. Michelle Red Eye runs that in Rachel Wolf's room at 2:45. A couple of times a month. Those are, those are really fun. I know it's actually, I know it's after school, but we participate with those things, not only get cut for classes, but we also go on individual trips that are kind of outside of just a normal class or something like that, that we can take our youth coalition on and then kind of add some cool trips I got to. So get involved. Find me, if you want to get involved. Yeah. Other than maybe having Dr. Miller just type a name in right here so I can breathe a little bit and then send it off and then do whatever he's after, you know, when we're done. So other than that, Title Six is on course still.
Thank you. Appreciate that. What's on the menu for tomorrow?
Chili. Also, yeah, there was actually, I asked, we were getting kind of sick with pizza wings at IPC, so I asked, what are we dealing? So everyone, a couple of people said chili, and so we're going to have a couple of fun little sides and some chilies.
Right. Okay, well, thank you for that. All right, so next we have central office message. Aaron?
Hey, we got an award from NISBA. And I just would like to say for that, there's a lot of people that are involved in our whole move towards farmer's school stuff. So John Haley is primary, myself and Ms. Tracy Pacey, board member as well. Patty Furlong, Carrie Federko are also school district employees that are on our committee. Sheriff Walensky, Becky O'Connor are from Cornell Cooperative Extension that we're, they're helping us out. You know, April Ramadan, who's a master gardener, who is helping us out. And Kate Keever and Sarah White Way, both from Erie One Voces that are also helping us out with this. So we meet on a monthly basis to go over things to see how we're going. Five of them went out to Vermont to basically start the whole program and set up a series of goals and action plans within the goals. So we meet monthly to figure out where we are, where we need to go with that. So it's really moving along. And as Mr. Clary had indicated, you know, Forestville had gotten a freezer from it. We've gotten three different pieces of equipment this year alone. Previously, we'd gotten a couple others, but we also have the grants that we're working on for local foods for, for school districts and then also the New York Foods for New York families, which is how we do the mealboxes. And our next one is on November 8th. And again, that's the indigenous flavored mailbox. And John and I are going to be working out some things for that tomorrow, Thursday. So there's one announcement coming recently. But I just wanted to make sure that all of those people are recognized in this thing because it's not just a one man team that's doing this. It's really a lot of people that are working on this whole program in order to make it successful. Beyond that, our audit's done as accepted last week or last session. So now I move on to transparency reporting. Taxes are being collected this month. We're doing the final cost report for COVID sursum money is at 1.6 million this week. And Chad doesn't know this yet either, but we were, have, will be receiving, I should say, an AED through the Sports Image, Inc., and that is sponsored by Universal Primary Care. So once we have that in-house, I already have the poster, but we're just waiting for the AED. So once it comes, we can do a presentation here and then figure out which location is enough, actually. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Karen? Brad, Christian, any questions? Nope. Okay.
Nope.
Still on central office. Would you like a turn?
Sure. Sure. I've been working with Family School Liaison, Ten Family School Liaisons, and we're working on sustainability and continuity with children and families. We've been working with, I've been working with principals on tightening up our OSS and superintendent hearing processes, supporting building principles and system principles for best practices, hand delivery notifications, affidavit or service now replaced, or serving notification. So we tightened them that up. We're working on coordinating our state and civil school initiative and what the next steps are. Also been working with the building principles to support behavior teams and teachers in a culture that when students are not having a good day in class, how can we best keep them there? How can we best give them time and space to take a break, to return to class, working on not interrupting instruction for teachers and other learners? And just shifting that culture from when things aren't going right for a student, for a student to leave, basically want to work a little bit better at keeping students and keeping instruction going. Also, I've been working with the ENL teacher Lindsay to support and to include Indigenous students. New York State does not recognize the Semite language, but we do. So we are working together to to do all things that ENL teachers do for all other students of diverse languages, including Semite language. I've been working with the instructional coaches and our American Curriculum Team on infusing Seneca history, language, and culture across all grade levels. Andrew and Cook is now working with both Semite language teachers, doing a lot of good work. And I wanted to share that. Dr. Beeler and I, and this is Duda, we're able to attend the New York State Superintendent Conference this weekend. And I found some very effective resources, really important resources for us to be examining our assessment practices, how we understand our assessment practices, how we gather assessments really in effective ways throughout the different levels of students. And then what we do with our data, how do we use it best and meaningful ways? We have people coming in from the conference representatives that we know that actually work with one of the assessments that we use. And I have one proud announcement that the Salamaka City Central School District is getting an award for the best Indigenous curriculum infusion at the National Indian Education Association Conference. So I'm going to receive an award and bring it back. And I'm sure we're going to plan some kind of celebration for that. So they just want to if they were here, they'd share it themselves. But I told them I would share it for them, but they weren't. And the last, we have some celebrations. Our step up to writing, gap analysis, all written constructive responses for grade eight exceeded proficiency, proficiency. And seventh grade extended responses also exceeded proficiency. So what that means is that all the interventions that are happening with writing instruction are making a positive impact and we're seeing a lot more proficient writers in our district. So many good things happening.
All right, so still on the central office message, what's become custom and tradition? We'll run the room here and see what's going on in our district. Let's start with Kim. We'll read prospect.
So our after-school program starts next week. So we are excited. The Empower Hour, which we've done in the past, that'll be on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We're also going to offer, which I believe Prospect cut it many years ago, but on Mondays, we're going to have a rich, in ritual type program, really grounded in playing and adventure and health and wellness. It'll be club-based, so kids will have a choice of the club that they want to participate in. So we're really excited. We have, the numbers are quite high right now. So we're excited to kind of see how that, how that grows. We have some offerings like archery and we have just basic, like some maker challenges and cleaning up prospect and I don't know, we're going to kind of see how it goes. But we're really excited for that. And we have a lot of kids, actually. We have a hack day coming up and we've been working with Aaron and partnering in having an informational performance during the day for our kiddos and that we're going to hopefully continue to grow that and think about what happens. And then also we're going to our staff at Prospect, they're going to be offering, we're probably some, we'll meet many PD sessions in the afternoon. So we're excited for that. We're in at Prospect on Friday. Open house is this Thursday, 5:30 to 7:00. So excited for that, getting the school ready and working hard to make sure that we have, you know, celebrating all the students who work throughout the building. It's exciting to have kids in the building.
Anybody have any questions? Awesome. Thank you. Aaron, what's going on in Salamaka?
Like every single year, the school year just gets faster. I believe we're already five, six weeks in the school year. As far as curriculum, our students and teachers have been really focusing on developing classroom, which is an extension of professional development that our teachers did on the summer to promote engagement and deeper thinking for longer periods of time. And that, you'll see a lot of our students are working vertically. So if you walk past the doorways and they're writing on the windows, or writing on the boards, or writing on the walls, that's part of that process. Our teachers are really diving into our new ELA curriculum that we're using, having. What we found is that some of the teachers were needing a little bit of more time to like dive in and figure out how to plan that out. So Nikki and I have been able to be flexible with our resources and our time, be able to provide full day opportunities for our students to sit and plan and really dive into make sure they're fighting. That's for our kiddos. We just came off of some MTSF grade level data meetings. We met with every single teacher and talked about every single student in the school to make sure that we were really focusing on whatever their academic needs were, whether that was remediation or extension and also attendance and social emotional components, which is making sure that we're tailoring school, that every single child. We also have our spend the day improvement program, helping start to speak up and share the word. We will have some power hour and other extracurriculars. And then we are focusing a lot on student recognition and celebration. So every single month, we're going to focus on character traits, have an assembly. So we had our first family December 29th, our show was fun with sex. Students were recognized for demonstrating respect rather than on December. This month, we're in self-control. Today, we recognize our first month CEO students, which stand for chief example for others. Celebration where we gave we invited families, Dr. Beeler spoke to our first class of students to talk about leadership in the community and the school.
All right, awesome. Any questions? Let's see. Lloyd, what do you got?
Great start to the school year. September rolled out and I was kind of miniclip. Aaron had said it was gone with the blink. It was coming quickly, a month or flip, flip for by. Students are excited to be here and I believe that's a reflection of the incredible staff we have and the facilities that we're able to offer them. At the high school, we're looking to move towards an electronic hall pass system that will help increase instructional time. Teachers will no longer have to fill out a pass to be able to do that on their device, which will help reduce the amount of times teachers are actually stopping teaching. I'm going to allow them to teach. It will also give teachers a quick glimpse as to how many times a student may have been out in hallways. And there's a lot of features to it that I could talk about for a while, but we'll keep moving. But essentially it'll allow staff to see who's in the hallway. One, one problem would be a student that's in a hallway that may not have had a teacher and if they're monitoring the hallway, they don't know who that student is with the, with the hall pass system. They'll be able to look, see a picture of the students, say, okay, here you are. So it'll also help in that measure. To put this in a place, we visited a neighboring district. Our staff went on a visit. They, they love, love the hall pass, but they also enjoyed seeing a neighboring district and what's Our staff went on a visit. They, they love, love the hall pass, but they also enjoyed seeing a neighboring district and what's going on there. Um, then we had a presentation to our student government body and then a faculty presentation is something we're looking to roll out this school year. Um, and I will go on a happy note. Outside of a couple of issues and sometimes those seem to. Overshadow things, homecoming was amazing. We had a, a football team that went out and did a great job along with all of our other sports teams. We had a powder puff game that went off and was successful. We had a dance that over three hundred students were able to enjoy and really have a good time. Um, and I think that should be highlighted that, that it was a good event. Um, and, and our, our students were able to kind of get out in a different atmosphere. It's always awesome to see them dressed up and. Enjoying themselves outside of the hallways. Um, now I'm just gonna touch on sore, uh, last year we had rolled out, um. What we could, would call like an I S S O S S room, recognizing that, uh, the students on suspension. Parents are at work and student may be home and. We'll just say left to their own devices. Um, this gives an opportunity for a student to be in an instructional setting outside of the building. Um, and the staff that, uh, operate that room actually came up with the name of sore. They wanted to be, uh, success. Um, opportunities, accountability and, uh, go along with their restorative practice, a restorative reflective piece. We've seen. Success in that room and students will go, um, and they're able to keep up with their schoolwork. So when they enter, they're not feeling like they're far behind. We've also revamped our reentry process. So when students come back to the building, we're having them meet with staff and, uh, we have parents in. And we, and we talked to them about what's gonna make that transition back to school comfortable so that, and we recognize that for students that might be out for medical as well. Um, being out for a long time and then coming back and now I can speak to my own. When I broke my leg and came back, I was a lot of powder. A few days, so trying to just make that process a bit more seamless and that's all I have.
I have a question going back though. You said something about students can enter their own pass in this thing?
Yes. So instead of a, uh, instead of a traditional, can I go to the bathroom? And potentially the, the staff doesn't have a, a go pass where they got a, a lanyard, they'd be filling out a paper pass. Um, the students can now fill that out. This, they still have to have approval from the staff. They'll be able to walk up to the staff and say. So, so in building thinking classrooms, if the staff members working with a small group and the student has to use the facility, they don't have to stop instruction. They go up to the teacher and say. Can you approve my pass? The teacher can approve it. Um, they have a code. It's secure. Yeah, yeah, they're not just free for all.
All right. Is all these students just can't go ready to go wander the halls?
No, 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 it's actually the help of that. They would never do that.
Any questions for Lloyd? No? Chris?
Yeah, so, uh, just to kind of piggyback on what Mr. Long said, uh, aside from a couple of issues, it's been fantastic to start this school year. Uh, our attendance rates are, are up over ninety percent, which is a big improvement from last year. Chronic absentee is down. Uh, our suspension rates are down overall. Uh, students seem to be motivated and engaged, obviously, uh, last year. We had drag seniors here at times and every time we've had a board meeting, there's a plenty of seniors showing up. So. Motivation there is, is huge and that's gonna pay dividends down the road to their success. Uh, our first about five weeks, uh, just finishing up, so I'm looking forward to reviewing the five great reports to, to. See what kinds of, uh, you know, communication need to have either at home to say, great job, or hey, let's start talking about what we need to do. Uh, we've also finished up the fall N W A testing, so we had another data point, uh, to help us. Either monitor our progress or determine what kind of interventions might, uh, be needed to put in a place for some students. So. Yeah, overall, very happy with how the year started, but I just, uh, wanna keep progressing and keep.
Any questions? Right, I want to go right behind you, Ray.
Um, so as you know, the security team, everybody is, they're all New York, they're new security guards now. And so we're coming on our first year of actually having our first annual training. That's gonna be, uh, over twenty eighth of this year. So, uh, we're going to, we're going to be very great right now. And like I said, they're either all in the process of. Becoming New York State Security Guards or they are. Um, so that's the one thing. The other thing is we got our act computer scenario coming up on November seventh. We've been working with Bobby Coon and Chris Baker and different pieces of Cataris County, uh, emergency services to make this all possible. So that's been, we've been in the planning for a little over a year on that. And it's, that drill's gonna be, uh, November seventh. So a lot of times we're into fitness. Plan and organize and different people in, we had the S R T team from Cat County in here. Doing drills, we've had first response, our armed security, they've done drills. Um, our S R Os and, and some like police department have a piece that they've done their drills. So we're gonna see how it all comes together here in another few weeks.
Awesome, thank you. Athletics, Chad?
Seeing, uh, security officer and S R O there, just wanted me to thank. Security team as well, we collaborate probably more than any other department, that's how. We have almost all of our community and, um, you know, our school. I'm just sad by somebody who knows what they're doing and has a, has a key to something or knows how to fix something. I just want to say that, um, we've had a good, we've had a good rapport with the security team, just making sure our facilities. Um, that goes for other departments, transportation, audio. And so just a public thank you to all the other departments who help athletics. We cannot do it on our own. The fall sport season is already winding down. We're in playoffs in about a week and a half for most sports, senior nights are happening. In winter sports, sign up, start Friday, it's ten thirteen already, so thirty days out, that's the window we have. With the weather changing, I've gotten a lot of requests for community hours for the, for the fitness center and the weight room. That'll start on ten twenty three. And five thirty to seven thirty, just like last year. Kind of waited a little while because most people were outside during the nice fall season. But in cold. I'll also have the pool open Saturday mornings and one evening day. Other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you. Jerry? What do you got for us?
How are we doing?
Good.
Um, so yeah, I want to heck it, what I've over, I've said since so far. A really great start to our school year. Um, we are now in October, so we're now full speed ahead in our C S C A review process. Um, three days a week, we're meeting and change our kids have our I Ps, um, wouldn't need to be. Tomorrow, we have the pleasure of having, sorry, Thursday, excuse me, we have the pleasure, R of R, and this is the director of special education starting, uh, so she'll be on staff. Uh, with us, Thursday should we get onboarded and then, uh, Friday we'll be, uh, we'll be ahead, um, with, um. And then your acting to our, to our partner across. Um, two, just two points of information for you folks. Uh, we do have a team from today, you know, the state audit coming, um, from the office of the, uh, state controller. When I reached out to our special education, uh, quality assurance folks and said, hey, what's this, what's this one about? It's not coming from you, it's coming from the state computer. Yeah, we heard about this. It's happening across the state in different districts specifically for preschool services. So just want you to be aware, other than twenty fourth, lots of people who stay in here. Uh, go and do all of our records and find people, check and make sure that we're doing everything appropriately for our preschool special education students. On the same note, this also happens to be the same year that we are due for what we call our, uh, state performance, uh, indicator eight. Which is again for, uh, preschool parent participation. That's a new one process that I'll be engaging staff with and parents with. Um, but that's kind of where we are to start the year. Um, yeah, we're full speed ahead, getting referrals, uh, getting kids evaluated and getting reevaluated and things like that. Getting all our, we've moved into the district. Um, I think it's a good thing. I think we're doing some break here as a district because we have. Lots of kids coming into our district at a minimum moment. We have a lot of kids with needs, with disabilities also coming to us too. So I think it's saying something about our staff and our schools, how we're providing not just for our general education population, but also what our kids need.
Well, thank you. Arcy, what do you got for us?
Um, aside from onboarding, all the people, the keys are rolling and all the new employees. Um, we, we are busy, uh, just between new students and getting that set up with the constant devices and. Our new adults, which is always exciting because they come in for one of the first phases they see when they come into the district, when they come to our office for their. Devices and stuff. So that's awesome. Um, we are finishing up renovations in the odds. It'll be, the, the videos are already in there, but the audio will be set up. They've got a couple of new screens, they can backlight things now. Um. New boards to make things easier for kids and adults to use the odds. That's exciting. Um. For the last sixty days, we've answered almost eleven hundred tickets for our help desk system. So that's been just a little bit busy. The tax stay will finally, we can breathe and then we had a bigger battery in our server. Closet meltdown today and we could smell it and it was great and that was a little bit of a. You know, anxiety level to me because that's the main server closet. Yeah, that's, that was okay. But anyways, we took care of that today too. Um, SharePoint, we are working on that and have started working on some of our e-forms and setting up for electronic signatures so they get. Fill out a change of address. It's a little form, make a couple of plates and then it's met and it goes to people, it's to go to the. So we will have probably about fifteen e-forms done here within the next. Oh, eight to ten weeks and I will be able to share out our, our sites here shortly and I'm unbelievably excited about it. So. That's tack.
Any question? Levi, what do you got for us?
Um, just finished up five week race today, helped a lot of teachers over the past couple of days to get their grade book set up and sync. Uh, they weren't pursuing to make sure that, you know, we have all of the eyes and, you know, I dotted T's crossed to. Ensure that syncing, um, last year with schools, you had some major issues with first time with the school that kind of. Bogged everybody down, but I think we finally got them all worked out and everybody on an even queue or, you know, how schools and our school work together. Uh, we're just able to email out all the five week grade reports, all the families and students, so they have those, they can check it on the portal. Just kind of winding down, sports winding down a little bit of the fall and. Got homecoming out of the way. Um, I can't echo Mr. Long enough, but homecoming was a great success. I've never seen so many kids show up. Um, you know, we got five hundred and some kids in high school, but maybe counted three hundred and thirty six that signed in, um, probably been one of the best. But, yeah.
Awesome. I just, I just wanna, if you haven't had a chance to see Levi's, um. Hall of Fame, it's a very popular place. He's got beautiful photos of the students who will sign him. It's become kind of a trend. I don't think he has enough wall space yet, not yet. The, the kids love that, but it's kind of a.
Uh, just in my back hallway here, the white wall space, usually after. Contest or whatever, there's a good picture that either myself or one of the journalism staff, so, you know, we kind of. Print it out, put it up there and then the kids just come in and look and they'll grab a marker and sign their name on it, kind of like just autographing, but. So I say add a touch. They'll take all down for the, you know, fall season then start glitter again. Of the new season.
That's awesome. Right. Kristen, do that. I see you're on the line.
I am. Thank you for letting me join in for a second. Um, so for the P P S office, we are in high gear with getting ready, are ready for kindergarten registration. For twenty four, twenty five. We have enrolled all of our students and as of today, we are at fourteen forty seven. And we currently have about four students on the waitlist for U P K. Every time we have an opening, we do let the families know. I've been working closely with the attendance officers and going through some different programs and some different things that we will have coming to them very soon. To assist with the letters going home to families and ensuring that all the information gets out in a timely fashion. And our data is just starting to get released. So information has slowly been getting to the principals and into the hand of Dr. Pontrillo. So we have that information out there so they can use it for their M T S S meetings. We're also excited. I've been working weekly with Epic and we will be having our meeting coming up very soon to go over our, uh, start and our kickoff for our family advisory panel. And that kickoff will also include, um, focus on attendance for this year. They've done some attendance work with some other districts. With some great success and we're going to look at that as far of, part of our first family engagement.
Awesome, thank you. Anybody have any questions? I think I got everybody, didn't I? Where are we at? We are, uh, Board of Education message, huh? Okay. How about Brad? Let's start with Brad.
I just want to say congratulations to everybody. We've got the awards tonight, food service and also give an extra thank you to the security team. Obviously, that is the most important thing for all of us. And I apologize for not being there. I just drove back from Nashville today, so I'm a little, little out of it right now.
All right, well, thank you.
That's all I got.
Christian?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you very much, everybody for having me. I'd like to apologize for not being able to be there tonight as well. Um, unfortunately, I had some family matters to attend to tonight in an event we had to attend, so I couldn't be there tonight. You got rescheduled and moved to tonight, so I apologize about that. Um, I got a couple of notes here. Um, let's see. Oh, again, it's good to, uh, here we received an award from the Champions of Change. Um, I apologize for Mr. Claire for not being able to be there in person. I would like to thank you for your message, kind words. As well as your song, which I couldn't hear that great, but I do plan on looking that up on Spotify, so thank you for that. Um, let's see here. Oh, uh, shout out to Mrs. Cheryl Johnson and her colleague Sean, I think it's his name, but we're getting some of the high school students to career days this past week. I'm up at local seventeen, um, the huge construction training center at the operating engineers. Um, I got to meet and talk to a number of the students and, you know, answer some questions and get to see, get to see them interacting and, you know, I'd like to commend her. All of them under good work with that. Um, Dr. Pontrilla, on your efforts in getting acclimated, a good job and. I, I didn't get a chance to say in my last meeting and I apologize about that, but I wanted to say that seems like you're getting acclimated very well and pushing some new positive initiatives. Especially when it comes to the, the, uh, language and our culture. So I wanted to commend you on, you know, all your efforts on doing that so far. And most importantly here, like to send a, a shout out to our school resource officer, Ray. Officer Martin, on your efforts in keeping our students safe and thank you to all the security officers and resource officers in tech, in the entire district. Um, your work doesn't go unnoticed and, um, I just want to thank you guys all from bottom of the heart for keeping all of our children safe. Um, let's see here, on something Chad touched on was the, the collaboration. Um, I'm glad to see everyone's working together despite. You know, a few recent incidents which we all aware of. Um, it appears that the results have been very positive this year so far, um. And, you know, Carrie, I wanted to thank you for, you know, going around. You know, calling on all the individuals because they're really, something I'm taking away already from this meeting is that the central office message was amazing tonight. It's good to hear what everyone has been up to and, and it sounds like everyone's been working really hard and I wanted to commend you on your work. So thank you again and, uh, yeah, appreciate you guys for having me.
Yeah, Christian, they all, I think they all know the routine. When I run the meetings, I'm calling on all of them.
Yeah, no, that, that's good. I, I, yeah, I, that's very good. Cause like I said, I mean, being new to, new to a lot of this, it's, it's kind of nice to be able to hear what everyone does. The type of work you're up to and, you know, really, I don't have a chance to, you know, to sit down and talk to all you guys. So, yeah, I, I just wanted to commend all you guys. To everything that everyone's up to and it sounds like good stuff. So thank you.
Yeah, you, you hear it, but when you get here and sit down with me sitting here, they all start scribbling feverishly.
I can imagine.
All right, Tracy?
First, I'd like to welcome all the students to the board meeting. I hope this is a, um, joyous. Event for you and that you can contribute more, um, not, not just because you're getting here. Um, like to thank all the teachers and the bus drivers, all of the school staff for doing such a great job. I mean, attendance stuff, right? So every, every, everything's going. Everything's going good. And I think that's it.
I was just looking over my notes, the, the one thing I was gonna touch on, she just got done, so. But everybody else pretty much touched on it. The, uh. I was just gonna say, uh, nice to see everybody here, um, for the school year as, uh, noted, is, uh, five, six weeks in, um. It's nice to see things rolling, starting here, you know, some data come back, results. Lot of positivity, especially in, you know, getting kids to school, them learning is priority. Um, also the fact that, you know, there's, the sports have, uh, gone from starting to now we're in the playoff season. That's always ni- nice to see and the, uh, we're one step, uh, closer to, uh. Carrie being happy since, uh, we went from eighty degree temperatures to, uh, lake effect rain. So soon that'll be snow.
Hey, you know what's first on my notes?
Yeah, I know. I was just trying to couple of points needed to talk about, so. The, but it's nice to see that, you know, open houses are happening, that's always fun. And homecomings are well, in the way ours is, you know, obviously over to other schools are still having them. But that's the one thing I just, there is, it's just nice to hear the, the numbers of the kids that were involved to go to the dance and, you know, definitely call out to security and everything on. Oh, the night went, the, it's nice to see that, you know, attendance, positive positivity from the kids, you know, involvement across the board. Hearing a lot of good things and I just wanted to thank you guys all for that. It's, it's nice to hear a lot of positive stuff going on.
Thank you, Dale. I don't think there's stuff to say, I think everybody said everything I wanted to say. Thanks, thanks to all the staff and students and administration for working hard these, these first five weeks of school. It's, it really shows, you know, in that, in the results we're getting back from the student, student proficiency. Being being exceeded. That is, and without all of your efforts, we wouldn't be receiving anything, any of these recognition here. We, we received today like from this, but that was a great honor. I know it's a lot of effort outside of the regular brick to pull that together, so thank you very much for that. Like I said, I can't believe it's five weeks in the school already, although I wasn't paid for three. I, I just want to say thanks to everybody. Thanks, Dale. Early in the meeting, Dale says, pretty soon every day is going to be a Saturday for me. I don't know when, but someday. Retirement. Um, oh, first, first on my notes, thanks snow. Those will temperature will drop and big snow, you'll be skiing before you know it. I know everyone's excited about it, right? All right, at least I am. Maybe Lloyd, Lloyd's excited. Um, all right. As always, I wanted to thank our staff. I want to thank you guys for everything you guys do for us, everybody, my colleagues, thank you for everything you do. You know, the reason why we're all here and the reason that we do what we do is for that group sitting back there. Our students, you guys are the reason why we're all here right now. You guys are the reasons why we put in the extra time, the extra effort is to make sure that you guys have the best opportunities available and we're all working hard to make sure that happens. So I thank our staff every single time we have a board meeting, but just to realize, guys, it's all for you guys, so. That's what we do. I'll echo some sentiments, sentiments. We appreciate everything that our safety and our SROs do. We saw the recognition, that's amazing. And again, I said it earlier, I'll say it again, appreciate them every single day. If they don't do, you can't appreciate them enough, I guess I would say. So there's that. And again, it's amazing that we received another accolade. We do so much with our food program. I know we joked about it in the past that, you know, we used to, I think we used to make a small profit on it because of our, our status, but I think we've turned the corner where we're just trying to do so much better and so much more now, so. And I think that accolade kind of shows where we're going with that, so thank you for that. Um. Other than that, I think I'm good for, for tonight, so we'll move on to superintendent message.
I'll just make it quick because a lot of great things have been heard. I wanted to acknowledge Mr. McGara that food to local food project is really a lot of her undertaking and guidance along with Mr. Haley. So while we all had the opportunity to enjoy the accolades there, that wouldn't be happening without her first foresight and leadership, so thank you to Mrs. McGara. As Mrs. Berry said, I had the opportunity to speak to students, which I haven't gotten to do in a while, so that was absolutely terrific. And I took advantage of that apparently because I think I went at least twice over my time limit, surprise, surprise. But it was a great time and it was really nice to see that we're acknowledging student leaders as chief examples to others. And the parents and grandparents were in attendance as well, so it was just another very positive time for family engagement as well as student recognition. Last weekend, I had the opportunity for four days to attend a national training program for school superintendents and their school superintendents that come from all over the country. There's thirty-six of us that are in a two-year program. And the three topics that we discussed over those days were social, emotional and academic learning, family engagement in the community and systems improvement processes. And it was very interesting because two of those, our district is heavily involved with specifically social, emotional and academic learning as well as the family engagement and it was positive to see that we're headed in the right direction with a lot of the things that we are doing, but also there were some challenges that were presented to us and there's still some work to be done, so that was very informative. The, the third topic, which is systems improvement process, it looks at our district and the processes that occur as systems and how we can make improvements throughout the districts by evaluating things in a systems approach and that was exceptionally insightful. The presenter is a national recognized leader in change for academic institutions based upon the medical field. So it's always interesting to hear leadership suggestions from people who are educators, but who have learned or perhaps even grown up in other secondary. So that was very challenging for us as well. I did want to make a note, everyone pretty much has made a note of our security and safety officers. And over the next several days, Mr. Levi is working with Mr. Haley to make sure that the community is aware of some of the changes that are coming up for this Friday's game. And I want to make a point of saying that safety and security isn't a goal, it's simply an expectation. And we are not going to slow down any of the activities that we have planned for our students. We're going to continue full speed ahead. And part of that is ease of access, but at the same time, we have to balance ease of access, meaning everybody just sort of wanders in as they please with some basic safety and security measures. So those will be detailed through social media and we'll be communicating those, but just so everyone's aware, we are going to be closing off the Broad Street entrance to Bets Park for this Friday's game. And the spring, we had the opportunity to see a demonstration of the Evolve Weapons Detection System that will be put in place at the Hillview entrance and then we have some other systems in place that will be used at the Front Street entrance. The board has the opportunity this evening to vote on the purchase of two of those evolved weapon systems that we can fold into the security and safety processes that we have in place and that's on the agenda for later this evening. Other than that, I really just wanted to thank particularly those people in attendance tonight, our students, because as we said, you are why we are here today. As well as our district leaders and our teachers, because without you, we wouldn't be doing a good work that's being done. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Okay, so next we have the consent agenda. Um, can I get more than you can send agenda? Motion by Ted. Second, second by Dale. Do we have any questions on the consent agenda? Okay, all in favor?
All right.
We've got two eyes on the screen. Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Now, under old business, we do have nothing and then under new business, we have the closing the dormant bank account and transferring the funds. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education, the Salamika City Central School District hereby authorizes the closure of the Warrior Vision Productions Bank account ending in X two zero one with the remaining funds of one hundred and ninety-four dollars, sixty-three cents to be transferred to the Student Council Bank account ending in X two three nine be approved. Can I get a motion to approve that resolution?
Motion.
Motion by Dale, second by Christian. Any questions?
Yeah, leftover funds from last year or?
Um, what they used to do is they would videotape everything and then they would sell DVDs and stuff, but because everything is strange, nobody's buying them, so this is the little bit of money they had left. And they want to put it in the student council.
Okay, any other questions? All right, all in favor? All right.
All right.
We got two eyes on the screen, opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, new business, item B, declare surplus. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following buses be declared surplus and be used towards a trade in or new buses at Bluebird Company be approved. One bus, one twenty-six, bin number blah, blah, blah. Two fifteen Bluebird. Fifty-seven thousand miles. Bus one thirty-four, and a lot of blah, blah, blah. Sixty-eight thousand, ninety-five miles. I'll undertake a motion for this resolution.
Motion.
Motion by Tracy. Second by Dale, any questions? Okay, all in favor? All right.
All right.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, item C, a donation, MJ Grand Center, Edna's Grab and Go. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Salamika City Central School District Board of Education accepts a one-time donation from MJ Grand Center LLC, Edna's Grab and Go, in the amount of one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars to be used for the athletics department in general and will be used in a manner that focuses on all of our student athletes. In particular, recognition for our scholar athletes in a letter of appreciation be sent, be approved. Right, motion?
Motion.
Who won that one? Trace, motion by Tracy, second by Ted, any questions? All in favor? All right.
All right.
Two eyes on the screen. Any opposed? And motion carries. All right, item D, consultant Gabrielle Papa revised. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a consultant agreement with Gabrielle Papa to provide Native American curriculum team consulting effective starting on or about September first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four be approved and the superintendent be authorized to execute the agreement be approved. Can I get a motion? Motion, motion by Dale.
Second.
Second by Ted, any questions? Dr. Miller, can you give us a quick rundown?
Sure, I believe in early September, we approved this essentially identical contract. There is a date revision from, I believe it was June as the start date to September as the first start date in order to coincide with a grant that funds this. The substance of the contract and hours, expectations and salary are, is exactly the same as what was previously.
All in favor? All right.
All right.
Two, two eyes on the screen, any opposed? Okay, motion carry. All right, next up, item E, contract for Ink Labs Buffalo LLC. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the quote from Ink Labs Buffalo LLC to provide hardware and software for Evo Express Single Lane One outdoor full subscription and Evo Express Dual Lane Outdoor Wireless Subscription and other options as defined in the quote bundled as a subscription service for four years at a current this year rate of eighty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars be approved and the superintendent be authorized to execute the court agreement be approved. Can I get a motion? Motion, motion by Ted, second, second by Dale, any questions? Dr. Miller?
Certainly, these are the Evolve Weapons Detection Systems. It is the same type of artificial intelligence weapons detection systems, not facial recognition, weapons detection systems that are used at places like Disney World. They are different from metal detectors, which is something that we might see at, let's say, the stadium. These are essentially the next evolution. They detect weapons. They don't use any x-rays. They simply identify the shape and material of what would be utilized as far as a weapon goes, specifically firearms, swords, large knives, things like that. They are free flow, meaning people do not have to take off belts, shoes, anything whatsoever like that. They can simply walk through this system. So as I mentioned earlier, our goal here is to keep access as simple as possible. And this is for two of these systems. One is a double lane, which will allow hundreds of people to go through every hour. Actually, hundreds of people every fifteen minutes and then a single lane. Both of these devices are outdoor rated, meaning they're, they can be used at any of our outdoor functions. So we anticipate seeing these at things, especially large events like and as I mentioned, these are just going to be wrapped up into our already relatively robust system to ensure the safety of our students and staff as well as the spectators that attend our events.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Two eyes on the screen, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, next up, the contract for Cataragas Allegheny, Erie, Wyoming County, Mosey's Skimmer Transportation Contract and Transportation Contract for second. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the contract with Cataragas Allegheny, Erie, Wyoming Moseys for Transportation Contract and Transportation Contract Summer of Special Education Students effective September five, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-four be approved and the Board of Education President be authorized to execute the contract be approved. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Sorry, Christian, Tracy, motion by Tracy. Second by Christian, do we have any questions? I've so on this one, it actually states that the Board of Education President be authorized to execute the contract.
In her absence, thus.
Vice President, but not the superintendent.
Not the superintendent. Okay.
I mean, if you prefer, I can take it to her the next time she went down, let me sign it.
No, my, my question was more about most of these contracts are the superintendent and some of this one specifically stated the Board of Education President.
There's a couple. It, I don't know why it's like that, but the transportation ones are always, that's it.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? All right.
All right.
Two eyes on the screen, any opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, item G, substitute nurse rates. Be involved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following substitute rates be of pay be revised effective October ten, twenty twenty-three. Substitute school nurse from twenty-three of twenty-three dollars per hour to based on experience. Substitute licensed practical nurse from sixteen dollars per hour to based on experience. Can I get a motion? Motion, motion by Dale.
Second.
Second by Tracy. Do we have any questions? Okay, all in favor? All right.
All right.
Two eyes on the screen, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, now we are on to item eight, the Personnel Consent Agenda. Item A is the personnel action. We have certified classified resignations, terminations, we have FNLAP absences, we have certified classified appointments. Certified classified substitutes for this school year. Student teacher internship, common field of work outside agency. We have one of those. We have appointments for coaching, athletics, others. For the Personnel Action Consent Agenda, can I get a motion? Motion, motion by Ted.
Second.
I'll give that one to Christian. All right, any questions on the personnel agenda?
Just one, the key question at Long Diamond Forty-eight, is that the, the new record?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? All right, all in favor? All right.
All right.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And next up, we have introduction of newly appointed staff. Do we have anybody here?
I know we have at least one. I'm just going to work my way around the room. And Chris?
I can speak on Mr. Bieber's behalf. He's been something for the district for a number of years, primarily in the high school, but he has ventured over to at least, I'm not sure if he's been a prospect in our. at least then, I'm not sure if he's been a prospect or not. Um, but he's also certified in science, pretty much every area of science. Uh, he's been very reliable and dependable. Um, and, and has been a flexible team player, uh, throughout the course of his serving here, so we are very happy to, uh, provide him, uh, the opportunity to be a preferred self, uh, and show up every day and just decide.
Awesome.
Alright, fine job. Mrs. Brown?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Katie Snyder. Uh, she comes to us from Sabo C's, and she's embedded in a local district, doing exactly what we need her to do here. Um, it's very evident that she is passionate for teaching and learning while bringing tech to our teachers and children in a meaningful way, um, all while using curriculum as an avenue, um, to advance skills while adding depth to learning, and you're super excited to kind of join our family.
Well, congratulations and welcome aboard, all. Do either of you have a speech?
Back.
Doctor. Oh.
Back move.
Yes. Uh, let's see, you are joining us as custodian, but it's funny, is it, yeah, just as a, as a custodian, so welcome aboard, and, uh, we look forward to seeing you, uh, wear halls. Thank you, welcome.
You have a speech, Doc?
No, I do not.
No. Welcome aboard. Alright, so item nine is Boarding Formation Reports Discussion. Um, there's our enrollment report as of October one, twenty twenty-three. Uh, we hear Kristen Duda mentioned our enrollment was up, uh, fourteen forty-seven.
Yes.
Our transportation report, um, our capital project phase three summary report, and a list of our upcoming events. Um, if you haven't looked at the upcoming events, take a look. A lot of things happening. There's always something going on at the school, so. Uh, with that, we are at, um, all in a ten motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Dale. Okay, second by Tracy. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Two eyes on the screen. Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. We are adjourned. Alright, thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight, and we'll see you at the next board meeting. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.